Drop in the bucket. And that is that Chief Lund had originally proposed, why don't we build permanent centralized, centralized being a relative term. Refilling systems, not like the Lund that's on High Range Cascade. In some of the aquifers. So that the fire department always knows where they have dependable sources of water and not have twenty around town that might be hit or miss, that you might be near. So one of the reasons that we need one for one of these subdivisions is that it is at the corner of town where there isn't another water supply. But that doesn't mean that it might, there might not be an aquifer point that could be accessed within five or seven minutes, I'm making this up.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
You know, is, is there a way to put four of these around town and then have the one at River Road? And now you have five dependable ones that refill themselves that are always reliable and stop building these fire ponds. Is that something that the town should look at doing over the next twenty years, not all at once, not, you know?
We, I like the fire ponds. Because if, if your, if your pipe, say your pipe gets hit with, with a cistern like that, you are screwed, right? If it gets hit and you can't create a suction, you, you can't use it. If a fire pond, dry hydrant, pipe gets hit, we have multiple ways we can get water out of there. Even in the wintertime, I can cut a hole in the ice and just stick the hose in there and we can make it work. With that, you know, like I said, with a, with a cistern like that, if anything happens to that, you're, you're screwed.
You're only gonna get the top twenty feet, because we can always pull it down, but we only have twenty feet and that's all the truck will pull.
And I should, I should clarify, it could be that we do four or five big fire ponds.
Yeah.
I, I was thinking not a cistern like a container, but the cistern that like refills off of the water.
Yeah, so the drainage goes into this, yeah, I like that idea.
Yeah, that's, I wasn't, I wasn't meaning to say an actual tank.
Yeah, okay, yep, yep.
No, I wasn't trying to imply that at all.
I mean, the idea is gonna go going forward is ultimately this, if we do make the highway department maintain these, they don't have the equipment for this. A backhoe's not ideal to do that. I mean, backhoes are jack of all trades, master of nothing. But, I mean, depending on how far these systems go out, these pipes go out, you know, you're, you're looking at trying to get a different piece of equipment out there to dredge some of these out. And we can backflush them every year, which we do, but half the pipes don't work anyway, so who's putting the new ones in?
And then are you removing some and by pulling some out of rotation, are you then forcing a new subdivision to build a new one, right? So when I think about the cost, I do think about the cost to the whole of the town, because we could be making builders build new ponds just because old ones don't work because they've not been maintained. So it's a hard, this is, it's a big question.
There should be some grant money available from the state to help out with something like that.
There are, I, I, I don't know that there is, I would assume there is too, um, the issue is then who's chasing that? It, it becomes a time issue. I mean, I would love to say I could take that on, but last week alone, I had forty-two hours just in the fire department.
Okay, the, your tanker truck, how many gallons does that hold?
Two thousand gallons.
Two thousand?
Yep.
And for typical average fire, you need to refill three times maybe?
I would say, I mean, the, the average.
The average fire for us is because of our response times, because of the call portion of it, you're looking at a three-quarter involved building when you get there. So it's well, yeah, it's well, it's much higher than that. We're taking in, we take in at least three tankers on our first alarm, our second alarm is another three, and then since Banky got drained, we upped each alarm an additional tanker. Each of those tankers hold a minimum of two thousand gallons, some hold three thousand.
Our engines carry a thousand gallons, so our initial piece that we take to the fire, we have a thousand gallons on it, which is roughly three minutes of water. And then once that's out, we rely on the, the tankers coming in to refill us. But, I mean, easily ten, twelve thousand gallons of water on an average fire, sometimes more, sometimes less. And then you get into electric vehicles, which is a whole nother thing, where a Grinch had one and it was forty thousand gallons of water.
What?
Forty thousand gallons of water.
You can't put, you can't put lithium ion batteries.
No, you just, you're, you're projecting.
Right.
You're gonna.
Blood running out of it.
You're trying, you're trying to pull the batteries, is what you're doing, but they burn at twelve thousand degrees, so.
You're not, yeah, the water's evaporating before it gets there, you're not.
And we don't have, we're, we're not even thinking about having.
Something.
Maybe a co-op with some of the fire departments and everybody chips in for foam.
Foam's not gonna do anything.
Yeah, we, they, they looked into these blankets, um, that was a, that was a big pick last year, they looked at these blankets that would cover the cars and then, um, they found they didn't work either.
Okay.
So we, we meet with what's called a MAPPA, which is the Mid-Adenoc Area Fire Chiefs, we all get together once a month. And the, these ideas come up and, and it kinda saves us money, because we were looking at it at one point just as an idea to buy and they're like, don't waste your money, wait for something else better to come out, but we at least, we bring in experts, we, we try to educate ourselves the best we can and try to save all of us money. For right now, I hate to say it, but there really isn't a great.
No.
There, you know, technology for the, the, the cars is out there, the technology to put them out, other than the cuts spot was stop this power spreading, throughout spreading out the car, but you still, if it's on fire, it doesn't do it and put it out, you know? But, I mean, that kinda, that kinda puts another kinda point to it going, fire ponds are gonna become more and more of a need for this town. People are getting solar panels, people are putting batteries in their house, people are living off the grid. These things could catch fire and these things, once they do, they're gonna be ten times harder to put out. You know, we're not dealing with just class A building fires anymore, we're dealing with, I mean, all these oils and everything else in there now too. So.
But it's good for the environment.
Yeah, yeah, that's what they say, but to kinda go back to your point, I couldn't agree with you more, our need for fire ponds is gonna go up, not down. You know?
So I think there's an immediate planning board need to know kinda how to go forward with the folks that we have. And then there's the secondary thing, which is if you would like the planning board to propose a warrant on your behalf to say that we, we look at moving this to a, moving towards a fire resource, town fire resource approach. Or we know we're gonna, Banky's gonna be drained again, do we take that opportunity to just put in the budget for next year to fix our strongest point, when the next time it's a drawdown, do we fix that standpipe? Do we, do we get ourselves the best we can on Banky this year and then go forward after that?
Ones again, dropped again?
I don't know, but they said it would take more than one drop.
Yeah, I, I don't think they made as much progress as they wanted to on this.
Oh, have you talked with them?
No, I, that's just, I, that's pure rumor building.
I was hoping they would with how long it was down.
Yeah, no, yes, yeah, no.
Well, it's not, it was only down for the two, the week or two that he said it would be, it's just the fact that we hadn't had any rain to fill it back up.
I was hoping they would take advantage of the, it wasn't filling back up to get more work done, but neither here nor there, I was just thinking fire.
If you look at other water sources too in town, if you, like, uh, the cemetery pond, for example, that's down two feet.
Yeah.
You guys will draw for that as well?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then Smithville, or you have any access to that?
Which is?
No.
Smithville?
We have access to Smithville, the only thing we have is, is, um, Taylor Road and that is right up against the Jersey barriers, actually the barriers got moved, but there's now a large sinkhole that got filled in with stone.
Yep.
Right in front of that, so I'm not comfortable putting a truck.
Right.
Right there.
But that would be another ideal location, at least to have the state give you.
Yeah.
Access, yeah.
Hiders, Hiders has always been a very reliable one too in town and they've been very good to us about using it, even during the day when they're, when they're open and they have business going on, you know, it's not, it's not the nicest thing when you get all these trucks lined up in your parking lot, but they've been very good and they've never gone in. But, I mean, that's all, I don't know, how, when they built that building, was that, is that how it was ridden? Right, I mean, I, I don't know that we're not taking advantage of, you know, a good situation and until it runs out, then what? That might have been part of their requirements to build a building there at the time was to put that fire pond in for them. But again, you get into the same thing with the HOAs where high range cascade have those, you know, the cisterns in there. Who's responsible for filling those after? You know, I think it's us, because we use it.
If we use it, yeah, the town would be responsible for filling.
So now you're taking a fire that's six hours and maybe ten, you know?
Yeah.
Two thousand gallons of, of whack. It's just something to think about moving forward is what is our plan, you know? And how do we do it, you know, whether it's the fire, whether it's the highway department that puts the pipes in and ma, helps us maintain them and and then it all comes back to one big thing is who's paying for it, or how we're paying for it.
So in the budget, the, um, maintenance of the hydrants has always been in the, um, the DPW budget. And the last few years, we've only put a dollar in there, so.
Yeah, I don't, since the drought year, the drought year, we, the town spent, I wanna say twelve thousand dollars on that. I think there was a whole bunch of expensive equipment and the time for the, for the firefighter to actually go and test.
We can, we can test it and then we need to rent the equipment.
Like a diver, you needed a diver for some of these and.
Yeah, I mean, really what we do is just flow tests and you try to see how much water you can get out of a particular water source. And all that stuff is rented, it's not free, you know, and the guy that comes out and certifies it with us too, depending on if he comes or not, that's another charge too.
Typically, you will need a diver though to check the screens, unless you have a camera, you can rent a camera as well.
We have one.
So I didn't know if, like, does it become that we put money in the town budget for the testing and the maintenance? And then we rotate every year, like they test a quarter and it's a four-year cycle, so that it doesn't break the bank every year? Or is it something where the homeowners have to get tested every five years and they split the cost of the test, but the, somebody in town does the test? Like, again, most HOAs aren't gonna be like, oh yeah, I got fire.
Right.
Push equipment, you know, like, they wouldn't know the first thing about reverse flow pushing of, of hydrant.
So you have two subdivisions right now before the planning board that both of them.
Have fire ponds, have fire ponds and, um, the, one of them is on a private, would be on a private road that they would then petition to become public, but the other is on a state highway, but the access is being put on a driveway. So do we tell those ten homes that they're responsible for something that might not be on their driveway, but they're owning the future cost of that? We wanna be very clear with these folks, because right now, we're, we're trying not to, you know, continue the, the unknown of the past.
Are we, we're requiring them to put a fire pond?
We are. Well, the, the, the planning board in conjunction with the fire chief has said this is.
Right.
Uh, now a critic, when you have this level of homes with, you're getting out into the non, we talk about scattered and premature.
Yeah.
Development, we're now getting to where these resources aren't there, therefore, if you want to build there and you want to put a significant number of homes, you, you need, it's.
A water source.
Right, it's, it's looking at risk and.
It also helps their insurance.
Yeah.
If you're, if you're near a, a water source for the town, because we'll get calls from insurance companies asking.
Yep.
What the closest water source is.
Yep.
The nice part about those two, uh, areas is that they're, uh, rich in that resource.
Oh, there's plenty of water, yeah, plenty of water.
But then that's where you get into that aspect of maintenance, because it's gonna potentially or more than likely be a community resource, not just a localized resource to that.
Well, I just have to laugh at, at the number of fire ponds that I don't think work now, I, I wanna say it was less than twenty-five percent actually drew the last time, there, there was a drought and we needed to test them. So that says we have, we, we, the fire department is working, and I don't mean to speak on your behalf, but they're working without the resources that somewhere along the way we promised them they would have.
All right, pie in the sky thought. When, at some point in the future, when they start, um, designing more, um, subdivisions, that would it make sense to, um, to set up a number of systems along the way that would catch rain gutter water and any water from any storm, from storm drains?
I think pie in the sky, I was calling it a cistern, but I was simply thinking of it as a rechargeable source of water that would, that would have access year round, right?
Yes.
So I, when I, when I was, what I was thinking about is self-recharging systems. I do think that would be the optimal thing to have.
Time you drain, just into these ponds.
Yeah, maybe five of these around town?
Uh, right now?
What's that?
How many ponds?
How many would we need, how many good water sources would we need? If we get five Bankys around town, would that get us what we need?
I, I, yeah.
Ideally, yeah.
There's a map right there, it's just, just looking at, you're right, once you go out into some of these corners, it's hard, you know?
But if you're looking in a cluster of homes.
Right.
Then, um, you're looking at, you know, whatever runoff from whenever they mow their lawn, or rain, uh, the rain gutters can, can drain down into the ro, into the road drain and that go over into a cistern rather than a fire pond.
I, I couldn't agree with you more, I, I love the idea of that, it's just, that works for the one, well, fact of the name of it, going in on Temple, I mean, on forty-five. That, yeah, that would be perfect for that, because it already is a, a wetter area. Um, my worry is to get onto some of these higher areas where you try to put, you try to put a, you know, subdivision in there. As soon as you dig that pond, it's gonna dry right up, it's, it's gonna be like some of the other ponds we have in town where they dug them and they did everything they were supposed to do, except it never holds water. So then what do you do there? You're gonna have to put a tank in the ground. So to say, you know, this idea works for every situation, it doesn't, I think it's, I mean, I mean, it's almost like you go and do like a test in the ground to see what's in there for water and will, will it actually hold water?
Yeah, 'cause you think about High Range Cascade, it's all, it's all uphill.
And it's all wet, yeah, yeah.
Well, what about Old Beaver, that doesn't have water in it a lot.
We're seasonal, we're only seasonal.
Yeah.
I mean, we're great, we're great in the spring and early summer, but right now, we're down.
But you wouldn't be able to access water off the river.
We, yeah, so, I mean, we could go further down, right at the Ashby line, and just grab water there, but what I don't like doing is relying on other towns' water sources.
Well, and at the other end, on the Arrowhead behind you and Lisa's, that's a big pond.
I don't know that they would easily get hosed there, but yeah, I mean, in theory, we could run it down if we need to. If they ever show up at our house, then yeah, we'll be happy to, to run a hose down there.
Yeah, it's, it's twenty feet.
It's, our trucks have to be within twenty feet of the water, because nothing, that's what sucks the water, like a hard suction hose that then comes off our trucks, so within twenty feet.
Yeah, no, we're not that close, no.
There's nothing worse.
So you're good within twenty feet of the hard connection?
Yep.
Yeah.
All right.
And that's all you can, you can't suck through the soft toes. So, and then it's typically, vertically, it's typically twenty-two or twenty-seven feet that you can draw, that the engine will actually draw.
From the bottom, well, yeah, from the bottom of the pond down.
Yeah.
Is that's, that's our max height.
So like some of the problems with that, we want on, in, uh, Ashby, right there on the town line, that's easily a twenty to thirty foot draw.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that, the truck's gonna work very hard to, to get that.
I wonder if there's some of these that, like even that one that you brought up, that's like further away? Like if you could run a hard line all the way out, like from those bigger sources, like even Smithville somehow run a line?
You could.
Yeah.
It'd probably then becomes the same issue we were talking about as maintenance, right, who's gonna flush that pipe out every day? It's, it's becomes, it, it's our responsibility to some degree too, to make sure these work and we do, we do flush them out every year.
Yeah.
But that's time, so.
But if we have less, like for, and bigger water sources?
Well, we, we, unfortunately, we know the ones that don't work well, so we don't typically touch those ones. Because there's no, there's no point in, in going to flush them if we know they're not gonna work, there's some that haven't been dredged in over ten years.
Right.
So.
Yeah, in fact, then, isn't that where Hutter ran into a problem?
Hutter's been a reliable source for a while, but they, I think they did dredge their pond.
They did.
A couple years ago.
This is the second or third time they've dredged it out for us.
That's just, because I.
If we're looking at cisterns.
Yeah.
They're certainly not gonna get as, uh, as muddy.
No, no.
The problem is with the cistern is if it breaks, if the pipe breaks from getting hit, then.
Like a snowball.
Yeah.
The suction's broken.
You're in trouble.
That's what we find a lot, is, is they're getting hit with snowballs, even the dry hydrants are getting hit, it's an accident.
That's interesting, huh, doesn't that speak to?
And it's not always the highway department, I've seen people out there trying to use, you know, a, a good deed and plow it out and then two seconds later, they're wrapped up into it, you know? So.
The downsides of an HOA, right?
Yeah, well, even, even, even the one on Emerson Hill, the, well, last time that got hit was by one of the neighbors, just trying to help plow it out.
And is that, uh, located on the road or what?
Yeah, it's.
Off the road.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's right on the edge essentially.
Is it in the right way?
It's ten feet.
Yeah.
Ten feet, and that's getting hit by a plower or something?
Somebody.
Well, they have to plow it out in order for us to get to it.
So they were trying to do a favor by plowing it out like an area and they accidentally hit it.
Okay.
So, that one's gonna have collars near it.
Yeah, I, I think with some design.
Right.
Stuff, you know, looking at some design stuff, because you can make those cisterns, you know, smaller.
Yep.
And just have a whole lot more of them.
Yeah, and it, and the way other towns, I've seen other towns do it, where like you said, the manhole covers at the top, so if they do, they do get hit, we just pull the manhole cover and we can put our hose down there.
Right, just, yeah, put your hose down, right.
But, yeah, again, you gotta be close enough to do it, so a lot of times it's, the tanks, you know, you're, you're, your hard suction lines out front and the tank's usually behind it, so that people aren't running it over. Well, then you're talking hose to get out there, so it's just, it's another hiccup that we can get past by just getting more hose off another truck if it's there, you know, but it, it's just something else to think about.
Yeah, it's, you know, and I think from that, I'm sure there are some towns somewhere across the whole country that may have already figured out a way of doing it, or their application.
Well, should we just do, why should we design fire pond stand-ups? Why not just build that, that there's a manhole cover there and instead there's a manhole cover, you guys lift it up and you access it, is that a problem in the winters or anything?
Yeah, trying to find a manhole cover to get a manhole, um, having the pipes stick up three feet is nice.
Okay, all right, I just didn't know if it was, the answer was to get rid of the thing.
The open, the open pond is ideal, it's like a failsafe.
Yeah, because, yeah, because there's so many different things I can do with it, right off the bat, if, if I can, if I can't pull a suction, I'll figure out another way to get water, you know?
When I look at the map, there's six, eight, ten good bodies of water around town that we could potentially, if we hard piped it.
Yeah.
To a good zone and brought it out to the road, this, most of this conversation could go away with all the, with different fire ponds if we just look at our natural resources that we have and how to access them.
Taking it a, a step further is, um, look at the, the land that the town owns. And that, this, this is a significant amount of land. And if there's a stream running through, pretty sure the, um, DES is kinda open to working with fire departments to divert water.
They definitely are, yep.
And so I, right off the bat, the biggest chunk we own is at the landfill.
Yeah.
Comes all the way back to one twenty-four, has, would have potential good access, I see two streams run through there, Gridley River and then a Sealy.
So the Gridley, we do have a, well, it's maintained by Peterborough because it's insured. Um, but going down one twenty-three before National Road, there is a dry hydrant there that we do use.
I'm saying more of a collecting pond.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
And actually an infrastructure build, use, utilizing property that we already own.
Yeah.
I believe we own the property down by, um, ABC Building as well, on Furnace Brook. That old spillway there, that's town owned.
We have a dry hydrant there too, we, we use that quite a bit too.
Someone's already thought of it.
Yeah, so they, they, again, it's, the, that one, I don't think has been checked in, since I've been here, as far as being, I don't know, you know, just go down there to see what it looks like. We, we backflush it every year, but you don't know what the end of that screen looks like, because when they were put in, most of them were steel. It's like the one on, uh, Old Country Road right before the bridge there, we ended up sucking up rocks. And I dove down there to go figure it out, me and my mother-in-law did, and the whole screen was rotted off, so.
It's not good for the pump.
No, no, luckily the pump has another screen on it, but you could hear the rocks hit the screen and go, you know, that's why we stopped it.
Yeah, it's a thirty thousand dollar replacement.
Yeah.
So, does that, I, I don't know if that's Furnace Brook or what, but right over by Warwick Meadows, there's a, a good flow of water.
Yeah, we own land there too.
Yeah.
But that's a big draw.
That's a, that's part of the solution.
Yeah, I, I realize that, but, you know, it's one of those that it, it could be a way of, of working out.
Absolutely, if there's a will, there's a way, it's just, it, I mean, it might even be just be that we go down to Mill Street. You know?
Yeah, 'cause I'm thinking, um, you know, Furnace Brook seems to run pretty well most of the time.
Yeah, and even, even if you look at the bodies of water, I think the other, not an issue, but one of the things we'll have to have is the townspeople will work with us a little bit and they'll have to allow the town to go on there with these pipes.
Is there one, a prep pond?
Hold it by Brookhaven.
No.
They've got that water dam over there.
Prep pond, they'll typically pull off the bridge on Lower Ground.
And is it possible to, um, to access that water?
Brookhaven is looking at putting in their own fire pond, but there is the dam across the way, I don't think the closest access point is Appleton. I think the closest access point might be, come back and go like the Thayer side maybe?
What's that?
Where is the, the dam, dam thirteen, dam fourteen, the one that's up near Appleton?
Between Appleton and Thayer Road.
Is that where it is? I, what's the easiest way to access that? Where would the best access point be for you guys?
That's gonna be way too far to pull.
It would be Appleton Road.
Oh, yeah, that's too far to pull then, okay, it's just not that close.
Yeah, because Thayer Road, you'd have to drive.
Let's say you're doing it over from the Brookhaven side, um, that, and, and drop a pipe.
Covala front.
Down.
They're looking, they're looking, they're looking, that's one of the ones that we're actually talking about.
Okay.
They're looking to put one in, um, but again, who's gonna maintain it, like, that might be, if that's gonna be a good one, if we can build a good one, it should have some recharge capability, because there seems to always be water, some water going through there, right? Um, but that's what we're, what are we looking at, I, I think what we're looking at is saying, hey, what I've gathered from this is they need easement to give the town access, we're good on that. Long-term maintenance and responsibility, I think we can say, hey, until the road's accepted, you have winter maintenance, unless we decide that's too dangerous for the standpipe. But I think when we get the design element, you guys are gonna look at this safety around the standpipe, not just the year round.
They can do it with, they don't have to do it with plastic. Or PVC pipe, they can, they can do it with steel.
Yes, but it's year round maintenance, that's the issue, um, it's mul, making sure it's mowed back, making sure that, it, yeah, and then where it's plowed and then also making sure that it's, kinda gets dredged out at some point.
So I guess that's where we start dredging and testing is where I think the cost and the, you know, that type, we can get as granular as you guys wanna get for now, right? Until we figure out a longer term solution, but what do we let these folks know they're gonna be on hook for or not? And is it kind of this, the builder and then the homeowners pay for the development and the town agrees to maintain it? Or is there something else, and does this need to go to the townspeople to say, is our water a, a townwide resource or does it belong to these HOAs?
And part of me wants to pass the buck off to the HOAs to say, it's your job, because it's a liability, right, I go to pull it and it doesn't work? I mean, that's.
Yeah, but then at the same time.
They're not gonna do it.
It's not acceptable, yeah, yeah.
So.
Yeah, and if we're making them do it.
Twenty, if only twenty-five percent work now, we, we haven't been successful.
Cause you can.
No, no, it's just.
You can, you can look at it both ways, so it's gonna be a cost to maintain it, on, like if it's, uh, looked at as a community resource and we have to maintain them ourselves, so you guys build it, great, we're gonna take it as part of our inventory structure and we'll maintain it. Or oversight of maintenance is gonna be a cost as well, like to make sure that you have someone in the position to chase people around and compel them to do things.
Right.
So it's kind of.
Or it could be a fifty-fifty split.
Or they pay for, for.
As far as maintenance.
Or, or the annual testing, if, every four or five, three year, five year testing?
Yeah.
And, but then when it comes to the maintenance, how do you, how do you?
Well, that's what I'm saying, fifty-fifty split, if we're making them do it.
Now, is that till the road's accepted or is that in perpetuity?
Forget about the road, no, forget about the road, cause if the road's not accepted, with, look at Old Beaver. The road was supposed to be accepted and it never was till twenty years later, so, you know what I'm saying?
But again, we didn't ever assume we were, we were, that fire pond was gonna be anything but the town's. We never assumed, we knew we had, we had to keep it clear, that's what was in our agreements.
Yeah, so that's, so.
I get what you're saying, it, it's almost a cleaner break if you just say, once they build it to a certain standard, the town would then adopt the fire pond.
Yeah, cause it's either we're, we're maintaining it, we're responsible for it, because it's a community resource, or instead of chasing people and having fights with
Right.
disloyal, disloyal HOAs, yeah.
Hey, they maintain it.
Same with cisterns.
Right, no, I, I completely agree, yeah.
You know, that, that's the, the contractor's, um.
Initial cost.
Initial cost.
Yeah.
After, after it's signed off by the fire chief? So they, they're gonna be maintaining it?
I, I think you're trying to standard, somewhat of a standard in town that they have to build to, so there's not a question of.
Correct.
You know, we, we want the dry hydrant to be at a certain height with collars out front and, you know, however else we decide to do it, but, um, and maybe what we do too is not cost more money, but maybe there's an engineer or somebody that does do this for a living, that we could get some advice from.
Well, there's a, I'm sure there's a group that could do a study on the water supply in town and tell us, are we, are we heavy on dry hydrants, are we, do we have not enough? Are they centrally located? Are they centrally located? You know, does it cover all parts of town?
I've had some insurance company that actually probably does that.
Hmm.
They're the one who's most likely to be liable for, cause they don't have to pay out, so.
I guess Southwest Regional do.
Hmm.
That'd be a nice.
Probably be a good resource for us, yeah, Southwest Regional.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, maybe we start there, but I think, I think Lou's right, I think we, we start with some kind of standard and that way it is built to this standard and then.
Right. And I think NFPA, when we were looking at ours, uh, one of the firefighters brought us NFPA standards of best practices for designing
Yeah.
some of these. And so if, if you guys, if, if we, whoever we is, could find that information, develop the standard and say, this is how, the standard that they have to be built to.
Yeah. Yeah.
Once it's built and signed off on, then the town would accept it. Do you wanna set up a dedication and an acceptance type of thing, just like the roads?
Well, it'd almost be assumed that if it's built to that standard, then we'd accept, like have that worded, so it actually codify it right off the bat, so there's not this question.
Once, once it's tested, once it's reviewed.
Once it's signed off by the fire chief, then the town assumes maintenance and testing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the less steps you have to making it official, the better, because it gets lost when it goes from this end to that end of this end, and then this, and now it's final, it's.
That's.
Yeah. I was gonna say. Yeah. Right. Cause when the.
Well, then.
That's what I was gonna say, like look at the roads.
Yeah, we test it, right? We just grab a truck, go and test it, make sure it works, make sure it's built the way it's supposed to be built.
Yeah.
Right.
And then, then it's done, but then that's a quarter of the problem.
Yeah.
The other seventy-five percent of the problem is ma- actually maintaining and actually.
Right, right.
Well, yeah, but in that case, the, that part of it is a tomorrow problem.
And it's an internal problem here.
Well, some of it's today.
It's today.
Some of it was last week.
Two months ago.
But, but at least the, all the residents in that area have done their part. It's over and now it's just all here.
Nope. Yeah, and it's simple, I like that, yeah. Um, but I, I do agree that if we're gonna do this, my other half is, I really wanna see a plan in place for the other.
Right, yeah.
Right, absolutely.
So, so I think, can we, can we wrap the, the planning board stuff?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
No, no, that's good. Well, and now I'm saying, do you want us to help you start to design a warrant article? To say, do we put this out conceptually to the town to say, do we move overall to a town water supply philosophy? Do you wanna, like, do we wanna put this out there to get the, to get the towns' take on how fast and how far they wanna go with this? Sounds like there's a need. My question is, what's the, what's the need? And I think it's a select board policy. I don't think it's a planning board thing, but we're happy, we would be happy to get something over the wall to you guys to put out there as a warrant article, just to.
I don't know, I don't see a need for a warrant article.
Out of arena.
Okay.
I think if they do it, I think the town's trusting us to make decisions.
Right.
And this is something, this is not a want, this is a need.
Well, and I think the key though is, how do we get the sustainability of the, both the program and the monies for the resources?
Capital reserve.
Well, I, I, and I don't think that's the immediate answer, or is it that we propose, at some point in time, we, we get out to the town as part of the capital improvement plan to say, over the next ten years, we wanna get the town fit, fit for fire.
Yeah, and, and there would be a benefit to everyone because of insurance companies.
Absolutely.
Right.
Yeah.
Loan, never mind if there's a fire there.
I, I, I like the idea of a cap reserve, because it's just, it's building up, right? And if you're not using all of it one year, you have a little bit of savings in there that if you do have to dredge a pond, or you have a major, you know, failure.
Right.
That's the costly stuff, yeah.
Right.
Then you could go, I've got, you know, the twenty-five grand in that account, what, we just do it, you know?
Exactly.
And how many of us were surprised at how shallow River Road was?
Yeah.
Shot.
Sh- right, and so does that, I was actually sitting going, we need to know the next time, does it have to be, does, does it have to be, does it have to be dredged?
It's a shot.
The next time they do phase two on that dam, does something have to be dredged?
I would love, I would love if they could dredge where the dry hydrant pipe is, right? Create a little bit of a swell in there so that we're not adding up with an issue of sucking up all the, the long.
And I can't believe it didn't, we, and we as a town again, didn't come up with this until it was, oh shit.
So someone asked them and he said that, like, tons of silt would just automatically wash out, but.
It's, it's not washing out, it's washing in.
Yeah.
That other pipe that was on, on right before the bridge on Co- Old Country Road there, that was, half of it was under, under mud.
And does the town need a dredging, a dredging permit for you guys to do your work? Do you need to go to DES?
I guarantee.
We don't do the dredging.
We don't, a highway department will do it.
Right, but who has to go to DES, right? Do we have to get that permit started?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Any, anytime you touch anything.
To even.
Yeah, and, and they are working with DES and everybody else to do.
Yeah.
No, no, the, the, the dam people are, but do, does, does Peter have a permit
They are, but, right.
Would we need that, like to get a dredge permit?
From DES ready to go the next time they drop, right?
No. We would have to, we would have to.
Oh, yeah.
And how much notice is the, are the dam people gonna give you the next time, right? I mean, it's just a couple, not my, not my role, I'm just being a pain in the ass.
Yeah.
No, no, it's, it's a good point, because if, if the paperwork takes sixty days and they're only giving us thirty days' notice, it's not really ideal.
Right.
We probably wanna have something ready to go.
Right, and it might be just a simple conversation to DES and go, hey, we're starting to take on actually maintaining some of our dry hydrants. Can you point me in the right direction of, what do you want for us to do? Right, we're just doing it, we're not, you know, we're not going elaborate, we wanna just make sure that these resources are available to us.
And can you have a two-year permit for any time they drop the pond, right, to get work done? That would be really nice that you could.
Just have an open permit for it.
I, I don't know if they give you one, but I would see where, if you wrote it out and said, hey, they're gonna be doing work on and off, we're gonna start with this area, then we're gonna go to blah, blah, blah area.
Right.
Seems too logical, I don't think.
I know.
Way too simple.
You know, I, I think before we go, you know, much further, um, go over to NHMA or Southwest Regional or whoever, you know, even to the state, find out, you know, what they think and let's look at what ideas they have, cause I'm sure that they've been working other places, or sure, exactly.
Oh, sure, yeah, I could agree more, I, I could.
Yeah, I have those notes to call off.
Let someone else that does it every day.
Right.
Let them think of these ideas.
Well, and I also think that we have to be careful to get small-town solutions, not town of Na- not city of Nashua solutions, right?
Right.
I think we wanna be very careful.
Well, that's pretty easy, they're on water source, so they have their own separate water source.
Yeah. They have plugs.
But in general, like I said, they're.
Yeah, I, I think Lou's right though, we're not the only ones with a tight budget. You have some of these other people, the people that do it for a living, they go, here's a cost-effective way to do this, here's the best we've come up with
Right.
for your, for a town your size.
Now, Chief Lund had talked about getting teaming with other regional groups to buy testing equipment. Because the testing equipment was incredibly expensive. I don't know what you guys need, but it was like, was gonna be ten thousand dollars to rent, but they knew somebody that could help get them a deal that they could borrow it from.
Hmm.
So I don't know, again, if this, if Southwest Regional would be the way to go to say, if Southwest Regional bought the equipment and then all the towns pitched in, would that work?
Problem is, is you run into, this person took it, it broke, now this person uses it, they find it broke. Who's in charge of fixing, who's in charge of maintaining that?
We got that, we got that cap reserve.
Where's gonna be stored?
Like, Malcolm and I returned something broke, my, you know.
Well, that's honestly, I'm the same way, but not everyone's that way, or not even would know they broke it. Because it, there's also a major training part of this too, that would have to go into it, but I think Wayne Perkins is the one that we used last time, who does our pump testing?
Right.
Who had the tools to, to use to do the hydrants. I'm almost positive it was him that we used.
I think that name rings a bell.
Um, and he's a great resource, but also it's not his responsibility to make sure our dry hydrants work, so.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we have a NAFTA meeting on.
Thursday.
Thursday, so we'll bring it up there, let's see what other towns are doing.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I guarantee we're not the only town with hydrant issues, but we may not be as reactive as they are, so they might have already had a solution.
So as a part of these next two subdivisions coming up, should we, um, ask for like galvanized steel pipe instead of PVC?
Be ideal, cause it, it, I mean, it holds up better. I think people think they were so worried about.
Yeah.
You, I mean, you could do PVC out, but at the base where you have your ninety coming up, I would make the ninety steel and
Make it steel, yeah.
the piece that comes up steel, just because it's, it's gonna be more solid, obviously.
Well, and.
It'll be a little bit cost-effective by, you know, using PVC for your run out, but the more sturdy the base is, the better it's gonna be.
Well, the thing too is we, we put our six-inch suction hose on this pipe, that's six L three feet, that initially doesn't move, you start moving water to that and you see this plastic pipe doing this.
Yeah.
You know, it looks like it's gonna snap, you know?
Yeah.
And I get it, it is a lot more cost-effective to that, but what's the longevity of it?
Well, it doesn't, yeah, you, you can be cost-effective, penny wise, damn foolish, so it's kinda, yeah.
Hmm.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, exactly.
So we're kinda like killing ourselves before we even start, yeah, yeah.
Right, so.
So for tomorrow night, if, if we go with the easements and that the, the the plans, the plans will need to be updated to town standards or fire chief or fire engineer sign off? Is that a good way to go? Cause I don't know that we know how to sign those off right now, but if we say, we can approve the plans and then their plans are, are, have to be signed off by you guys, is, is that the way to go?
Yeah.
I think so, cause from what I understand, you had some impact and say, um, the one on, out on, off forty-five.
Yeah. Yeah, they have been really responsive and they've been really, we've had a lot of back and forth and, um.
Cause that one was sized, what, forty thousand gallons or something like that?
I don't, no, we have the, the drawings, um, we're supposed to look at them tonight after this to kinda get an idea what he's, cause he's coming to you tomorrow night.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, but I think that, that the big thing, if we can ask, I mean, at this point, you don't have a standard, you're almost asking them to put the metal pipe in, aren't you?
I don't have any problem if we do that, as, cause I think that area is not going to be very well protected outside of, you know, so I think the, what did you call them, bollards?
Yeah. Right.
B O L, the R D S?
Yeah. Yeah, it's just two, uh, yeah, steel out bollards that would come off, that protect the, um, the dry hydrant pipe, and if we can, if we get our pick, our pick would be that it'd be a metal pipe, cause it's
Okay.
it's gonna hold up a lot better.
Fill the concrete.
Yeah.
Just like you see in the front of the stores.
Yeah, oh, you're talking about the bollards.
Yeah.
And I'm gonna ask that, I, I, I'll, I'll send a follow-up on this, just so I can make sure we have the stuff ready for tomorrow night.
Okay.
I don't think you'd really wanna mess around with mixing PVC and galvanized steel.
No.
Not right now.
Well, they, they, and they do make the adapters that are pretty easy, you know, once they go out, the plastic pipe that's now gonna be in the water, we don't.
One of the others, yeah.
Yeah, try to stay away from plastics pipe as, as you can, cause any shift on the ground, like we do get tremors every once in a while.
Rubber, connect. Okay. Yeah.
Those will crack eventually.
Yep.
So no, I, yeah, I mean, if we can, if, if we can, if we can do that, set that as a standard, you know, as of moving forward from tonight, this is, this is what we do.
Just for, as far as.
Yeah. I was gonna say, congratulations, you're the first fire pond to, to, we're working out the standards, but you're the first one, we're.
You're the guinea pig.
And then, but the goal will be, build it to standard, fire chief or fire engineer sign off, we don't know which yet, how we're gonna exactly make this work.
Yeah. Right.
Um, but, and then it would come to you guys to officially put onto a list, or would it just stay with the fire chief to put on a list? Like, I don't yet feel like we, I feel like we're starting to get a fire, fire plug inventory, but I don't think we actually.
Well, I think that it needs to be a shared list so that, like our office can maintain it, yeah.
Yeah, both.
I think you have, because, you know, we end up with an issue, someone leaves.
Right, yeah.
And I have everything on my personal laptop, it becomes an issue.
Well, it's kind of where we sit, isn't it?
Yeah. The other thing I can tell you is part of the master plan is redoing the town maps. And we can put, if you guys will tell me what lot numbers those are on.
Yeah.
I can have those marked on our town plan.
Hmm.
That'd be great.
Cause that for a, aha moment.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we can put it on the assessors cards going forward.
Yeah.
So that it's easy for us to pick them up in the future.
Right.
Yeah.
In, uh, in April, once the fire chief comes, we'll love to.
What was that, I'm sorry?
I said, once the fire chief comes in April, we'll have them do that. So I did notice as we were talking, I was just browsing through, there's a lot of companies that do the testing and maintenance. Which would be worthwhile looking into.
I think it's just gonna be the cost, so.
Oh, it's something, it's the cost of doing business and having a community in town.
But just hearing the chief talk, saying how his hands are, well, beyond full, DPWs, beyond full.
Yeah.
I'm just saying that there's other ways to make this happen.
Yes, sometimes you have to farm it out.
Well, it might, it might, it might work. I don't know if the, like, if you look at the total cost of this, is, if it's ten thousand dollars for us to do it, and you can use it as a training effect, that we can then pay more of a stipend to our firefighters, does the fire department want it, if we have to pay fifty thousand dollars to do it, to farm it out? I don't know the answer. And that's where I'm gonna look to you guys to bring it back to them, you know?
Yeah.
That's, now you're, except for CIP stuff.
Right.
It's not our, it's not our bill.
I think our biggest thing is just trying to get this, the town chief thing funded and, but, I mean, these are all valid issues that we're having and that we're experiencing, it's just, there's only so much time in the day. So that's, that's the issue that I have, is, is trying to balance it all.
Yeah. So thank you for, uh, attempting it.
Yeah.
Thank you for coming in.
To attempt a wrangle.
Yeah. Uh, but I, I, I do wanna be part of the, you know, es- especially the fire ponds at town, because that's my resource, right? It's gonna be us that are gonna tell mutually towns or our guys to go there and, and pour water, so I wanna know that they're built right and I wanna know that they're gonna work, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, you know, you're gonna have review.
Yeah.
Of, of everything that goes on.
So, um, making more time for this is, is something that will definitely.
Because it, it'll be a learning experience for you also.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And that, you know, and once you get into that, as the town, you go, uh, expands further, there'll be more of these, and you'll have a, a, a better idea of what will work and what won't work.
Yeah.
So, have one of you got lot numbers for the, where the, all the fire ponds are?
No.
No.
How, how do you know where they all are?
We have.
My head.
Yeah.
Although, that's how the intersection works for me, that's fine.
Uh, so we have a list I can give you.
That'd be great, if you'll email it to me?
Yeah.
That'd be lovely.
And then, um, this is just, this is just a dry hydrant list of ones we have that doesn't mean it work.
Yeah, that's, that's the, the, exactly, that's the list of all the dry hydrants in town, dry hydrants and cisterns.
Yeah, that does, yeah.
So. But, yeah, I would.
Can you send it to me as well?
Yeah. And then, um, but I said, it doesn't mean they work.
Yeah, that, not, there's one step at a time, right?
So. Huh?
Okay, good thing you had that done, right?
Is it, it's, so it's just dry hydrants, it's not, um, fire ponds?
Dry hydrants. Correct, so typically the, typically the, the pond is connected to the hydrant, so it is the fire, it is fire pond, so we're combining fire ponds and dry hydrants, it's all one.
The first thing we do.
Okay. Okay.
So where there's a dry hydrant, there's a fire pond.
Got it.
Or a cistern, yeah.
Or a cistern.
Cistern, yeah.
It's just all water supply to you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Got it.
Hundred percent.
Okay, cool.
All right.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you guys.
Thank you, Dee. We got enough for tomorrow?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay. Cool. Thanks guys, appreciate it.
No problem.
Do you feel good, better? Yeah.
Yeah, I just need to just know where we go. It sounds like we're working towards water as a.
As a goal.
Yeah, have a good night, happy drinking, so, thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Are you guys gonna be at the staff meeting tomorrow, Ted? Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you very much.
Good evening.
Good evening. So, just here to listen about Naimi Road.
Oh, okay.[1646.94] Oh, okay.
Oh, that's for another, another half hour.
I know. We are my home.
You have nothing to bring to us, huh?
Huh?
Nothing to bring to our roundtable discussion?
Well, actually, I do have a question of Debbie. I'm supposed to be meeting with my budget hearing person, but I haven't even seen a budget.
Okay.
Are we getting them?
Um, so you're supposed to have access to look it up. Um, in the software.
Well, we normally get paper copies.
Of, like, year to date what you spent, or are you looking at?
Are we gonna present new budgets this year? I mean, don't we, usually by early October, we have paper showing us what our previous budgets were and what we're gonna put into a budget for this.
Yeah, that would be up to your F A C person.
But it's also up to you, I mean, the previous budget is here.
No, I know what the previous budget is, I have a copy of that, but I'm just talking about adding to the budget for the following year.
Yeah.
Yeah, so she's talking about.
I don't know, this should be something that everybody was so concerned about and this year, nobody's concerned?
Do you, were you?
So nobody from the F A C is contacting them?
Yeah, I'm meeting with someone tomorrow night, but I have nothing to meet with them on.
They will.
But he probably should've emailed it to you.
And he did it.
Or not, like, there may be an initial meeting.
Yeah, possibly.
I don't know, I'm not sure. So.
Yeah, I don't have anything from them. Like, I can give you what the budget was this year and how much you've spent this year.
But didn't you used to print up the budgets?
No, they didn't.
How did it go last year?
I don't know, I, I was German last year, so I didn't really.
Jen did.
What's that?
Jen would've done it.
Okay.
I don't know who did the, um, assessing and planning last year.
Hmm.
So like, I've, I've gotten my things from Joe and he broke down every single line item that V O S is.
Third email, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So. I don't know. Let me look into that for you.
Yeah, cause that would be Jen still, right?
No.
Oh, not Jen, but Jenny?
No.
No.
That'll be Pam.
Or Pam, oh, Pam, yeah.
Like, all I have is your spend year to date, basically. I don't, like, the F A C doesn't.
I just remember it starting a lot earlier than this.
We had last year because, um, uh, it was new and it was taking us time to, um, to figure out where everything was, but, um, the F A C people have been working on this pretty much since, what, about August?
Yeah.
Uh, or even sooner, so.
Working on what since August? What have they been doing since August?
Of going through what the expenditures were and trying to, um, forecast what the expend, expenditures will continue into the next one, into the next budget.
So they're gonna write our budget up for us?
No, they're going to, they may make recommendations, but they're going to, uh, go by your input.
Yeah, you basically gotta tell them what you want. And we don't even know about assessing, cause it's a whole nother nightmare. Like Assessor.
It's a dream.
No, it's a nightmare.
So it'll be the same, yeah, it'll be the same as last year, but it just would be a little bit later.
But that is how, I believe their approach is, is they come to you, this is where, what you've spent. This is what we had last year. Now, what do you want to do?
How much do you think you're gonna need next year for this? Do you still need that? Do, like?
That's how the budget is built on your end. So they're not, nobody's telling any department. We wanna know what are the numbers, and then I think on top of that, they have like priority one, two, and three, you remember that?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so that as a department head, you can say, this is a priority three, I really like it, but I get it if I don't get. You know what I mean? You can structure your.
I mean, you know, you know what the line items are.
That's, that's fair.
It's just a matter of, do you need more money for education this year or less money for education this year? Cause you didn't, and, or, you know, all the, all the things, it's not a huge budget.
Okay.
Were you part of those meetings last year or no?
Um, with the budget committee, no.
Okay.
I don't know why.
Well, I, I think, I think Jen maybe helped, had done it.
Sounds like that's changing this year.
Maybe just worked with Jim or something on that?
But, uh.
I don't know.
Yeah.
The budget's not nothing, that's for sure.
I have no idea. I don't know how they're like. No, I'm saying, but there's not a lot of num, a lot of line items in there.
Oh, yeah.
That's, that's what I meant by, I didn't, when I said not a big one, like, D P W's got this many.
Oh, that's. Yeah.
You know, not dollars, but.
Yeah, yeah, gotcha.
I think, uh, last year and the year before, they did, they chose to do a kickoff meeting, first or second week of September, uh, which they didn't do this year.
Yeah.
Which would've been the initial cue to start, yeah, working on it. So it didn't buy them any additional information or time with department heads.
Cause nobody went.
They waited until their initial meeting, uh, to start anything, so. All right.
Okay.
Cool. So now.
Round table, you guys. I did my round table.
Oh, uh, with Brownfield, are they talking about coming, are they gonna do that other testing before they, so all that just stays in draft form and?
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
Any indication of when they're gonna start on that, or they had to go back to their committee and?
They have to, they have to go back to the Brownfield committee, um, which they sent out a Google invitation thing of, a Google poll of when the best time, and I think the latest date was November first or something.
Yeah.
So I haven't heard of when the actual meeting is at Southwest with them.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's probably, we're talking probably another couple of months or so.
All right.
So.
Did you have anything that you could speak on from your meeting last Wednesday evening?
Yeah, seven to save.
Oh, seven to save.
The Preservation Alliance has, um, put the Old Town Hall on the seven to save list, which is seven projects that they take on and devote manpower to. So we'll be meeting with them, the Heritage Commission will be meeting with them, uh, within the next two weeks. And yeah, it's a huge step. That Old Town Hall has been interest and then nothing, and then someone tries again and nothing, but all along, it seems like it's been what are you gonna do to get started? And these, the Preservation Alliance knows.
Yeah.
And they've successfully, where we met was, uh, what town?
Bradford.
Bradford Town Hall. And they said there, it was a twelve year, twelve year journey to get that thing restored. But when you hear the stories.
It's amazing.
It's the same thing we're facing here.
Yeah.
All of, most of these old town halls are, basically the eve line is the lot line.
Okay.
And they still, they find ways to open it up again.
And it's, there was no money attached to this recognition, it's just, they, they point you in the right direction of where you need to go
No, it's not a grant.
to get grants or, um, donations or whatever. They have like a whole committee that just helps you.
Yeah, they have.
So is that sustained energy, like, from start to finish, like, so some of the pieces could fall off in the community and then,
Yeah.
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 But they're gonna be that constant.
Right, exactly.
Pushing.
So they help you.
Pushing to get it back on.
Yeah.
Beautiful.
Yeah, so that was really big news.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's excellent.
Yeah. And the Historical Society had helped us with that as well.
Yeah, they were instrumental in.
Yeah.
Fran and, um, Emory Traffic both filled out the application and so Emory's from the Historical Society. So it's kind of a joint.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Yeah, exciting.
Usually, probably private things work pretty good. So we'll see.
Yeah. That was all I had for round table.
Just looking through mine.
For now.
Yeah. Oh, and then, um, Ashley Sari is gonna be coming to the two hundred seventy fifth anniversary meeting.
Oh, nice.
Uh, to help, um, she has some insight on how Jaffrey did theirs and like how they can publicize ours or how we'd like it to be done, or if we want anything done. So she's to just, has asked for five to fifteen minutes to kind of speak and.
Cool.
You know, take some stuff in and be an active part of the dialogue Thursday night.
Um, I did mention at that Wednesday night when we went to the seven to save, we were talking about, um, the arc two seventy fifth, and they said, the best thing you can do is get those like commemorative license plate things. Like, or Jaffrey did do it, and he's, they said, people like collect these things and they want to buy them. So you, you purchase them for X amount and then, you know, like mark them up a little bit as a donation. Obviously, you tell them how much it costs and how much of your, you know, if they cost fifteen and we charge twenty, five dollars of each purchase will go to the Heritage Commission, um, donations or whatever. But they said those license plates, which are cool to have for that.
I'd like to make a motion.
I'm open.
I'd like to make a motion to remove the door in the hallway, at least for the hinges, and set it aside for the foreseeable future.
Uh, I'll second that motion.
And a discussion.
Open discussion, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I have had other complaints of board members get her under the bathroom, stop, punch the code. And I feel it's unnecessary. Which you've heard all along in scattered bits and pieces.
So instead of taking the, uh, the door off, what, can you just, uh, take the keypad off and leave it as a door?
There wasn't a door there for.
Or just leave it open?
Hmm?
Just take it off the hinges. Is what I'm saying.
I'd say just leave it as a door and, um.
And see how it goes. This is the reason why I say just pop it off the hinges for the foreseeable future, leave it in the closet, and if it is, if it's like, this doesn't work without the door, then put it back on. If it works just fine, then maybe leave it off.
Out of curiosity, there's that sign in sheet that's up on the wall inside the other door, is that used every day or?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm gonna say ninety percent of the time it's used.
Yeah.
When we bring someone in to the inner sanctum.
Yeah.
Not for meetings, obviously, it's, it's for during the day.
Yeah. Yeah, cause that, that other door probably stays open most of the day.
It does stay open all day.
All day, yeah.
The only point of that door was for when there's meetings in here, to prevent people from wandering around the rest of the building.
Yeah, there was a legal question to that.
Cause all those file.
And I know anytime there's a legal question, there's two answers to it, but it was legally questionable.
Why was it legally questionable?
Because it's a public building, there has to be public restrooms.
Oh, that's true, that part, yes.
There is access to public restrooms.
There's access, that's what I mean, it's legally questionable.
Hey, I'm gonna twist that RSA all I can.
Oh, that's what everybody does.
No, I'm just joking.
No, I'm.
I'm joking.
I do understand it.
The thing there is if you leave the door there without a keypad or a lock on it, then there's actually that's a whole time.
So can you come in?
Absolutely.
Either way. Yeah, and that. So. There's the motion.
Okay, and then it was seconded, isn't it? All in favor?
Oh, okay, chairwoman.
I mean.
Uh, yeah, what are your thoughts, Sue?
Um, if you leave the door, yes, if, um, if you're pulling it off the hinges, uh, leave the door without the lock on it or, you know, paying attention that would actually block, uh, going through it. I would say yes, yes, if, um, if it means, uh, taking it off the hinges, I don't like that idea.
All right, yeah, I guess I can see the point of seeing, you know, popping it off the hinges and seeing where it goes, so, uh, with that, um, the motion on the floor was to pop that door off the hinges and put it aside for a period of time to, but how long you want?
Yeah, I said the foreseeable future.
Yeah, foreseeable future. Um, and see if there's any issues that arise. Um, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries to one. If issues come up, let us know.
Okay.
We need to get locks for the filing cabinets down there then. Cause there's non-public information in those filing cabinets.
Okay.
We thought about that, we talked about that a long time ago.
Yeah, they're really expensive though.
Good evening, everyone.
Thank you.
I ascertain what y'all are in for, not, not about removal of doors or anything, but.
No, it sounded exciting though.
What's tougher than that one?
So we have a, a few minutes before we can start, um, we can't start that till seven o'clock exact, no, no.
Are we in your way? No, no, no.
I just wanted to let you know that we're kind of getting to a point where I think we're probably gonna take a break before the hearing.
Fine.
Um, so.
Fair enough.
Okay. So you wanna, uh, go on break till six fifty nine?
Yep, sounds good.
All right.
Were you asking me to look in there?
Yep.
Sounds good. Sounds like you need a break.
Uh-huh, yes.
Go close the door for the last time. Spend more time this afternoon going through it. I appreciate it.
Yeah, but I just. I do my errands and stuff, I come home, plug it in, it sends me a message to my phone, your, your car is all charged. It's nice.
September ninth.
September ninth, yeah, just five weeks old.
Chloe Patricia.
Yeah. Her name is Patricia? Patricia.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. Had a weird apple.
There you go, you're on. Genealogies, I've been, I've been working on that, I found out that I get real just minutes, I never, uh, it's like. I'm trying to now. I sent a, I sent a email to ancestry, to a guy, and said, can you share your family tree?
Oh, really?
I grabbed a general one.
Oh, you grabbed the other one?
Yeah.
Oh, I had a specific one.
Oh, you did, yeah. I hadn't repurposed.
Yeah.
Oh, you, oh, you just.
I repurposed the other necks, yeah. Yeah, cause I went down to that, I was like, where'd you go?
Yeah.
Hi, nice to meet you.
Yeah.
All right, hello, everyone. I was seeing that seven o'clock, uh, welcoming you to the public hearing regarding, uh, the reclassification of Nimi Road. Uh, we're gonna open up the public comment, and from the faces that I see in the audience that I'm familiar with, some that I'm not, but you all look like, uh, cordial people and understand, like, to give each other time to speak and, um, how that all goes. So that's all that we ask for is consideration and plateness, you know, through these, even though there's some emotions that run with some of this stuff. So we understand that too. Uh the purpose of this public hearing is to decide whether or not to put this on the town warrant as something for the community to consider. Um so your input is definitely valued um this evening and going forward, um if we should choose out a second public here. With that being said, uh when you, before you speak, please just state your name and then your address for the record the first time, and then after that, just your name again so that we have it recorded. And with that, I welcome you and I'll open it up uh for public comment. Um so just one one moment, if you, Jason, did you want a second to speak ahead of?
I don't know if um we should say how this came about.
I'd like to hear.
Yes, I'd like to ask now.
Okay, so it was triggered by the uh application for the conservation easement?
Why is that?
Well, if you could just let it.
Yeah, if you could let me. So it wasn't, it wasn't an act of retribution for the con- conservation easement. But it brought to attention that there is essentially one house that this road serves. Now, there's two at the beginning. There may be, I don't know, two hundred feet in. And then the rest of the road is a town-maintained um right-of-way, which is essentially a driveway. There is no other purpose. The state law forbids the town maintaining a driveway. Am I right on that? I understand this is not a driveway, but for all intensive purposes, it is. And that's what brought about the discussion.
Especially now with the easement, cause it cut off that access for further development. Like down, down the road. So that's where we're looking at it, that it it ended that possibility for more homes uh to go in. And then thusly wouldn't live out the purpose of being a road, like a town-maintained road.
So if you look in the RSAs, it's hard to find clear statutes that govern the rules of the road. And so NHMA has put out a booklet, I think. I'm not sure if Debbie has it here, but it's called a Hard Road to Travel. And they signed court cases instead. So I look at it from a reverse perspective. Should, if this was a class six road and you were seeking to have it to be made into a class five road, that you understand what I'm saying, what criteria would the selectmen have to consider this? This is from a court case, Rogers Development Company versus Tilton. And they ruled that the selectmen would consider integration within an existing road system, ease of existing traffic flow, improvement to convenience of travel, facilitation of transportation for schoolchildren, improved accessibility to a business district or employment centers, um improved accessibility for fire and emergency services, and whether or not it would benefit a significant portion or just a small fraction of the town tax base. And then the eighth reason was anticipated frequency of road use. So actually, I misquoted that. That was actually in New Upswitch, Green Crow, Green Crow Corporation versus New Upswitch. So these were the, when I look at them kind of guidelines and I see what we're faced with on Nimi Road, it does raise a question. And so, and the RSA dictates our job is to prudently manage the town's affairs. And so is this a good expenditure of taxpayer money to continue maintaining a road? This same court case also said, future development is not a consideration. The court doesn't see that as a positive or negative. It shouldn't apply to the decision. So this was actually, I looked this up after we talked about reclassifying the road. So there's some background, and it's not retribution. Talking with the road agent, we have one other road in town like this. And I feel the same thing would happen.
With with Road?
Kestie. Kestie Road.
What about Cold Road?
Which one?
Cold Road, um Kivala Road.
They serve one house? And this is what I'm looking at. When it's one house.
Well, technically, this 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 road doesn't serve just one house.
There are the two at the beginning. We can start a class six road where we see fit. And that's was just done on East Old Country. It was divided.
I agree, though. Kestie Road was the number one on my list.
But you got the deal road. There may be other ones as well. This was just at a glance at the map. And then we also have class six roads where numerous people live on them. And so there's some kind of imbalance here in my mind. Now, to take class five out from under someone, that's pretty brutal. I get that. I understand that. Um however, back to the RSAs of trying to be responsible with the town's resources, I think it's at least worth a discussion.
Thanks for explaining.
And if I could just, Lou, did you have anything that you'd like to say before uh we hear from our community members?
No.
Peter?
Not at this time.
Okay.
Well, I did have one last thing to add.
Let's add that.
This is classic. I get called Columbo sometimes. But it is that um reclassifying a road to class six from class five does not restrict future development. Because it's a matter of petitioning the select board. We're putting in a subdivision. We would like this to be class five, so it doesn't restrict any of that. Yep, that's all.
With that, ma'am?
May I respond?
The floor is yours, yes, yes. Thank you for your patience.
Okay, my name is Kira Montague, and it's my house. It's, there are two houses at the bottom of the road, by the way. And one house is used by a lot of different people, including my family when they visit. So they're there and it's a functioning house, but fully heated, fully electrified, fully everything. So I don't think you can say there's only one house. That's just reality. And as you probably understand, I've been there since nineteen sixty-six and we bought it because it was on a town road. And we paid for that privilege. We didn't buy a dead-end road for nothing. So we've had very considerate, thoughtful service for, by the road agents over fifty-eight years. And I feel that with the encouragement of the town to give land to conservation and the compensation for those expenses, by the way, that you did do, that to call this retribution for the conservation is is just that's out of left field. There was no way I needed to do that. And there was no way I needed to do that if I knew you were going to do this. It does not go all the way down my road. There is no, there's only a small portion of the road that is conservation land and the rest of it is not. So the rest of it is developable within the confines of whatever numbers of acres and so on, if it's a town road. So I just feel very, very upset, as you can tell, that you would just suddenly leave me stranded. There's no way I could go there in winter or month season if the town wasn't looking after the road. And and for me, it's, I go there every weekend. You know, it really does matter. So I don't know. I mean, other people may have other feelings about this and I'd like them to say, and my son is here and he knows it well, so uh that's, those are the main issues I want to dwell on. And right now.
Thank you.
Do you mind if I respond?
Sure.
There is a way you could access your property. And that is you would have somebody plow it, which everybody does. Your driveway would be especially long. But it wouldn't cut off your ability to access.
If I don't have to worry about paying for all that, repairing the road. I mean, this is something you've done in return for my taxes all these years.
So, yeah, if, um, I'm Dominic Montague, my mother. Uh I grew up spending certainly every summer and a lot of time in between on Nimi Road. Uh as my mother was saying, I think um you made the point that what brought this to mind was the uh the allocation of ninety acres of my mother's property uh into uh into a land trust. There's twenty-five acres of the property that was not put into that trust and all of that has led to roads. So as my mother said, it's only a small part of the road which uh is a j- which is now abutting the acreage that was put into trust. So so I mean, I think for for us, the concerns uh beyond what my mother's has mentioned are really the safety of the property. I think if an ambulance, sorry, my mother is is eighty-eight and goes there alone, most of the time, I now live in California. And if an ambulance couldn't get down the road, um I I it's hard for me to imagine that she could go or if a fire engine couldn't get there in an emergency. And to being sure that the road would be maintained in a way that that was possible for the last sixty years, but certainly the four years since my father died, has been sort of a critical thing that's made it usable for us. So I I think that really is the most important thing for us is is, you know, a huge change in the safety that would make this a usable property. The the other issue that you mentioned that is essentially a drivable driveway because, you know, all of the acreage is now part of a land trust and won't be developed, I I think that's really not the case.
That wasn't what my point was.
Oh, okay.
My point was it serves one residence.
Okay, I I I thought you said that it couldn't be developed because of the land trust.
That's a the.
No, and in fact, in fact, the courts say that that doesn't, that's not admissible one way or another. That's off the table for whether or not this should be a class six road. It just doesn't come into the picture. All that comes into the picture is the here and now. As far as what the hard road to travel, manual sites.
Right.
And and to the point of emergency vehicles accessing, I would say the same thing. I need to keep my driveway maintained so that an ambulance can get there. It's my responsibility.
I I I mean, I think that's true, but I I would draw a distinction between your driveway, which you either built or it came with your house, and this is a responsibility which you took on. And so there's, it's hard to imagine a scenario where the town is taking that privilege away from you. And this situation where the town has in fact made the house and the dra- the road safe and would be taking away that safety. I understand someone could do that by themselves, but this is a safety that for the moment, for the last sixty years at least, the town has assured in the same way it's assured for Page Hill Road.
Right.
And that would be removed.
And with the class six rating, because we have people who live on class six roads in this town, all that happens is they assume the responsibility for the maintenance. And that's, it doesn't
It doesn't.
Suddenly make the road unusable.
No, no, I completely understand that. But but I think, you know, to say that the road is maintained by the people who live on it is 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 I, i- in my mind, quite different from saying that the road is suddenly no longer being maintained by the city, and that's a shifting of responsibility to the owners.
Yeah, it absolutely is. It absolutely is.
That I think is the distinction for me that seems important. And again, you know, I'm not gonna play up my mother being old and crippled, but she's eighty-eight and for her to manage, you know, establish and manage a contract for maintenance of a road regardless of the implications of cost for the next many years, that would worry me. I would, I am not confident that that's safe, that that's doable, that that will happen when she's there and there's two feet of snow, that the road won't get washed out, and she can, you know, find cell coverage and get somebody to come and repair the road in time for an ambulance or a fire truck to arrive. I mean, and I understand, had that been her responsibility for the last sixty years to come here and say, we think now this is the town's responsibility, would be completely inappropriate. But this is the inverse of that, and it really does make a difference. So you know, that I think for us, that is a huge issue. If there's a separate issue that the value of the property goes down, houses on class six roads, as you know, sell for less, take longer to sell than houses on class five roads. All of those things, they're not really the main thing that we're worried about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we going round or around?
Well, anyone that would like to speak?
Like a Quaker meeting?
That's a Quaker meeting? Do I have to stand?
No, no, you don't.
Oh, but I'll try. Um, hi, I'm Frederica Queso. I live at two eighty Page Hill Road. I have been a neighbor since I moved in here of the Montagues. And I think I wanna correct uh an assumption that this is just a driveway used by the Montagues. This is an extremely popular area for people to walk and recreate in the town. I constantly see people walking up and down there. Plus, I'd like to bring on the fact that there is that second house there, and it's not just a house that sits empty. It is used by, through the generosity of the Montagues, by many families. In fact, I've seen families with special needs that come out because they open their house to these people to stay there for a period of time. I've had, they've offered it to other people, stayed there for months of time. I know of a case where there was a single woman who needed housing and she stayed there for a year. These people need access to the road to get in and out for jobs, for groceries, for whatever they need to do while they're staying there. So I think to just sit there and say this is a simple driveway leading to a weekend house is erroneous. It is used by many people through the generosity of the Montagues, and I think it is wrong for the town to take away a road that has, a classified road that this, they've given to them for the last forty-some odd years.
Sixty.
Sixty years. That's a taking. And we made a prom- you made, town made a promise to them in a way in my life, and now you're taking it. And I I know what the RSAs might say, but this is also an emotional thing and a kind of commitment. So there's my five and a half cents.
Thank you.
Could I give a, just a quick?
Sure.
Going to class six, it remains open to the public.
I understand that.
So all the walkers and the people who access it would still have that same access. And and to the point of, yes, it is pulling out from under them, um there's several ways of rectifying that. One would be a a direct negotiation with the town. The Board of Assessors may get involved and say, well, this devalued the property this much, the tax rate will be lowered X amount, whatever they would determine. Um or it's clear, and we received a letter from your attorney. There is also re- There is also recourse through the legal system, going through the courts. That obviously, nobody has much of a stomach for. Talking is the intent of this, is to see if there's a way to talk.
Anybody else like to speak? Sir? And again, you don't have to stand up. You could stand if you'd like, but nobody needs to stand up.
In age. No, I, I just first became aware of this a couple of weeks ago and I have never met this lady. Although she lives right down the street. And it really hits me the wrong way, after ladies have been paying taxes and living there, that you decide to call it a driveway when in fact it's a road. That may be, you were paid. And I'm here to support her, as is my wife, which is. You know, you've mentioned how you, you have concerns for the betterment of the town and you wanna watch out for the expenses of the town. I would ask you some afternoon to go down to the lower school and watch dismissal. The driveway is loaded with cars all the way to the school, out to the road. People park in the parking lot, mothers and dads to pick up their kids. There's lines of buses. I'll guarantee you there's no more than six kids on a bus. What a waste of money.
That is another department.
I know it is, I know it is, but it's touching on your exact um thought process. You're concerned about the money. You can be concerned about the money in all kinds of areas. I'm here to support this woman. It's wrong. Thank you.
Can you please state your name for the record, please? State your name.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You don't have to stand up.
I gotta, I gotta, I gotta. William M A Y. Two oh one Page Hill Road.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I should.
No, that's okay. I knew that, but I just wanted, for the record.
Sir, please?
Yeah, I'm uh, I'm Kevin Little, neighbor of um, uh, Cara. And we've been in New Ipswich, my wife and I, we live in three thirteen Page Hill Road for about a little over twenty years. I know Jason and I, we walked together on Page Hill or whatever. I've commented with Jason on many occasions how special New Ipswich is. We came from another community, we lived in Derry, same size geographically, but it had like ten times the amount of people as it does here, so there's a lot more space. This is a very, very special community. And what, one of the most, one of the most loveliest things we love about living on Page Hill Road is the generosity that Cara and her husband Coco have showed to the neighbors. We had an ice storm back in two thousand and eight, you know, we did some cleanup for them to help them out, but they've got the most beautiful trails through their property that, that the neighbors enjoyed all year round with snowshoeing and.
Someone gave me.
Yeah, they will, we, we helped out, you know, the, the neighbors got together. Uh, I personally walked down that road. Billy doesn't see me walking Page Hill because I love walking down Nimi Road. It's a, it's a beautiful road and this community is so special. The fact that they've been in this community for close to sixty years and the town has taken this position to keep it as a class five road. Now, at this point, to come and change that, it just, it just strikes a chord, you know, in my heart in terms of these lovely neighbors and how well, how well they've treated us in the community and I, I, I don't think this is the right approach to take for the town. I really don't. And I'm, I'm grateful, so I'm grateful to be her neighbor. I'm grateful to be a resident of New Ipswich. The town does a tremendous job maintaining all of the roads. You know, Page Hill Road, the, the, the work that's done, you know, on Nimi Road, I mean, it's superb. The paving of the road, putting the lines in the road, I mean, you know, it's, uh, it's, it's wonderful living here in this community and we wanna stay here for the rest of our lives. You know, we've mentioned that we feel like we're on vacation, living here in New Ipswich. It's a, it's a community, it's just a wonderful community. There's a lot of good people. I'm the president, his name Vincent DePaul, you know, the food pantry, and I know a lot of good people in this community. And it's, they are, they are right in there in that, in that, in that category. And I'm very grateful that I'm their neighbor and I, I hope that the town will reconsider what they're thinking of doing and keeping it as a class five road.
For your eloquence.
I'm Joe Trainer. I live in, uh, Page Hill, three four five. I've been taking care of the Montague farm for forty years. Plowing whatever they need. These people.
That's a gift, tell them. It's a gift you've given us. Always.
These people have given me a gift. They've been extremely generous to me and my family. They're class people. They bought that property a long, long time ago. And it was, it were maintain- and they bought it because it was a maintained road. And you are taking it away.
We're not right now, just so you know. Just so you know, we're not right now.
Right now?
Yeah.
But you're proposing it. And I disagree. I'm here to support these folks. They are class act people. And you've got no right to do that, absolutely not.
Now, I can, I can thank you like very much, but this is a discussion. There's things that come up.
I apol- I apologize.
There's things that come up regularly and some of these, like the many roads that are single, like driveways essentially, come up, it's just murmurs here and there, like periodically, and no one's willing to have the discussion. So it's all like timing, circumstances, and then let's have the discussion instead of people saying, oh, the longest uh town maintained driveway. Like, that's kinda just what comes along with it. So I appreciate you all coming in and having that discussion with us.
I wanna apologize for, if I get a little irritated.
Hmm, thank you.
I can certainly understand.
I, may I just argue against calling it a driveway?
I'm just saying, what, it's, it's used like in, like when things come up, like.
I, I'd like to say one other thing.
Yeah.
About the, this road versus driveway. I've had two immediate family members living at the, the farm, one for a year and one for three months. And they were in and out on that road every day and that's all I wanna say about that.
Thank you. Ma'am, did you have something you wanted to add or?
Well, I, I think first of all, there are two houses. That's, that's important to state and not just say it's going one. And secondly, you know, in the future, if we were able to afford to keep this place, there's room for my grandchildren to build a house. There's twenty-eight acres more. And it comes off Nimi Road. So, you know, I think it's always been there as a possibility. And, and obviously, we wouldn't have thought about anything except the long term if we were doing all that conservation. That really was a long-term commitment to the town. And, and I wanna be able to stay there and I wanna be able to go there and I wanna be able to use it. And I want my family to. So I'm just adding that because I don't think it's fair to call it a driveway exactly.
I can appreciate that. And ma'am?
My name's Pat Little and life's three thirteen Page Hill. I just wanted to add to what Kevin shared. She's very humble about her generosity, but she's been extremely generous. The first time that we met them was in a snowstorm. We were just walking down the road and they just opened their doors and said, come on in. That was the first time that we met them. We've been here since two thousand and four and I'm not sure, you know, how soon afterwards, but then they just opened up their property, just like what she's doing now with the conservation easement. Extremely generous person and I just feel like the generosity should override everything.
Sweet, but we have very generous neighbors too, as you can tell, so.
And I also wanna comment on the roads and the way that they take care of them. This was, when we first moved in, I mean, Page Hill is such a hill and I can't believe just how wonderful. We've never been able to, they have trouble getting up in a snowstorm. It's always been perfect. When they repaved, we had some problems at our driveway with it bumping down and they came out. It was like incredible, just fixed everything. And, um, and Nimi Road, it just, like it blows me away, just on how well that road's been maintained over the years and I'm very grateful to the town for such wonderful work. I want to just add that.
Anyone else that wishes to speak? Sir?
Ryan, Ryan Osterman, Emerson Hill Road. So I'm kinda curious about the other roads and like you guys have said, well, maybe we can just plow down past the first two houses on Nimi Road. So where are you gonna turn around and plow truck after you plow beyond those first two houses? And like, we, we talked about Kesty Road and I'm pretty sure Coal Road would be the next winner and that's paved. That's, there's one house there, but it's got frontage on, it's got frontage on Asperham Road. And like you said, there's, there's a handful of other ones that have maybe two houses, maybe three houses. So I'm genuinely curious as to what you're gonna do with those other roads now that this has come up.
Well, we're looking at it and I hazard to think that there'd be similar response from, you know, community members in those areas, like for those other roads.
Is it even a can of worms? Should we just close the can of worms? Be done with it?
You know what I mean? Weighing things out, as we're taking everything in right now. I can appreciate that.
Do, do you have any way of knowing what it costs for the town to plow my road and look after it? Is there?
We did get a rough estimate from our.
A sixteen-year total of what that's been?
Our, our, uh, road agent and our, uh, highway, uh, director, Peter. Where'd you get your way in, comment us?
Yeah, I think we came kind of like a yearly estimate of about, uh, about a thousand dollars a year.
In my little road?
Yeah, yeah.
For how many trips? Oh, that's the main.
That's the total maintenance.
Oh, I see, okay.
So grading, raking, depending on snow, plowing.
Yeah, so that was, that was labor. Yeah, and yeah, it's, it's, it's a rough estimate that that's, and it's, yeah, if you have a really rainy summer and you're going down there to grade it a lot and gravel washing out, obviously that would be more. Yeah.
Sir?
Mr. Chairman. Did you say a thousand dollars?
Yep.
I can't believe, maybe it's me, but I can't believe we're here discussing a thousand bucks. If that's all it takes to do a road, what are we talking about? I can give you probably ten real areas we could look at and save a hell of a lot of money. But a thousand dollars, you're concerned about a thousand dollars for a lady that's lived here and has paid taxes for what, sixty years?
A lot of taxes.
A lot of taxes. Well, we all have a joke. Including all of you, we're all on the same boat. But I just can't believe we're discussing this for a thousand dollars. That's all I have to say.
Yes, ma'am.
Jacqueline Bran Hall from three fifty-two Page Hill. Our property kinda shares woods and backs up to theirs and we do see the cars going in and out. We do see it get plenty of use and I just wanted to tack on that, um, you know, ourselves, uh, we have two dogs, that we take for walks. We get plenty of use out of the generosity of their property. They have all the trails that are on there. We see all the neighbors that are out there getting use out of it. And yeah, I don't agree that a thousand dollars is too much to repay for all they have provided for the neighborhood there.
If I may. You can flip it. That's how much it would cost to maintain that driveway. Sorry I used the word driveway.
I didn't get, what was that?
Well, it was said that it would be prohibitively expensive to maintain the driveway if it was, and, and it wouldn't never, it would never be a driveway. What it would be is a class six road where, um, there is permission for the owner to maintain it.
I mean.
So my point was, you can flip that.
Sure.
And, and the idea is forty man-hours. There's also a thing that we look at in managing the town is the human resources. And have you, I mean, you can, you can look in the budget for the DPW and you can see they're taxed. I mean, they're like maxing out. And again, this night is not about, we're gonna do this. It's just about discussing and what is the role that the town should play? And where should lines be drawn? Because like I said, there's class six road, roads with many people on it.
Right. If they weren't classified before, were they?
They've gone back and forth.
Have they?
I believe, I'm not sure of the complete history.
Which road?
Um, like Aldrich Road.
That was discontinued at one point.
They just, I, I could be wrong, but I think they just paved for that.
Yeah, that's a different discussion.
I, I know.
Not part of this meeting.
Yeah.
Not part of this meeting, but it is a class six road and there's very nice houses back there. With the addition of also now some infrastructure, a cell phone tower. They do okay. And so my, my point is not to say, we need to strip her of her, it's not. It's just how do we manage the town, how should we manage all of these things? Is it fair to do this? And it's, well, it's almost impossible to be fair as a selectman. Someone will always have a criticism, but try to do the best we can.
Understood. There's also promise made, promise kept. Town made a promise sixty years of a five, a class five road.
Long, long before we bought it, so this is not a promise to our, it was.
Right, and, and you know, like I said, reading this hard road to travel, which cites all the different court cases, it's absolutely, your attorney was right on. There would be some, um, I feel like, I don't know what the rest of the board would, but I feel like there should be some kind of, what do you call it?
Restitution.
Restitution. Like, yes, we understand this changes the dynamics of your property. And so we.
That's what I think.
Uh, from a safety perspective though, let's see, you talked about somebody has a long driveway that they don't plow, the fire truck can't get down there. That's their drive, that's their property. This would still be, it's still gonna be a town road, a class six road, so you guys will still be liable for any. How, how can you figure it out? That's no different than somebody getting hurt at the town field.
Well, I get, again, I'm not really an expert, I can read what the,
Oh.
what it says. Some municipal officials are hesitant about class six status because they're concerned it will create liability. On the contrary, municipalities enjoy significant statutory protections against liability and maintenance for class six roads. So they can go to chapter six and eight and look at that. That's just addressing your concern of liability.
If it'd be one thing, if, if, if Nimi Road were turned into a private road, then it's, you know, then it's their responsibility, which I'm sure they're not gonna do that or the town would, but.
Yeah, I don't think the town has any interest in that.
Absolutely. That's not, that's not what I'm saying. I'm just saying, the town in New Ipswich will still be liable for that road, but not be able to get an emergency vehicle down there, possibly.
Yeah, I didn't read chapter six and eight, so I'm not sure what they're alluding to. But it gets, there's a lot of.
Lot, lot of worms.
Well, if all those things are taken away, that's pretty significant for me. You know, I do feel that having a property I couldn't get to for several months of the year would be a terrible thing and you can say I can find somebody to plow it. But I have to find somebody to maintain it and I don't know that that's doable for a single individual for a thousand dollars. So I just don't know. Of course I don't know.
And, and I have to reiterate, I think it's very different, different to say this is the responsibility for you, for your driveway and you knew when you bought your house or built it. And to say, you know, I assume that Nimi, that Page Hill Road could be maintained for a thousand dollars from every house that. And to say, you know, I assume that Nimi, that Pagehill Road could be maintained for a thousand dollars from every house that lives on the road. And I think it would probably be inappropriate for the town to go and say, we're not taking care of Pagehill Road anymore. We're gonna make it class six and everyone who lives there can pay a thousand bucks and you'll be fine. So, I just think there is a difference between saying, this was what you signed up for, and saying the town, town is taking away something which the town committed to provide.
Yeah, I hear, I hear that loud and clear.
I, I don't disagree with the issue about class six roads, but the change is something.
Real quick, this is the last time we do this. Hang in there, bro. When you take the human feelings out of this whole thing, right? Um, and you look at the real dollars, if this ever went to court, I don't know what the fee would be. But we're talking a thousand dollars a year. Why go to that trouble for now anyway? I would ask, you know, just out of the goodness of your heart, table us at least for a while. I mean, this is not, this is not a good thing. It's not good money-wise, it's not good with respect to this lady here. That's all I have to say. Could I?
Could I ask a question? That I think is, while it's not relevant to the class six status, but we reviewed the, uh, application for the conservation easement. Will that land be open to the public?
If they walk in at the top, yes.
So through it?
But it's gotta be outside, I mean, if anybody comes on my land, then they have to talk to me. The whole arrangement was-
So right there at the very top?
Right.
It would be open, public can, not to any use, but to specify uses.
For walking, yes.
Correct, yes, for, for non-motorized uses, right, I think hunting is prohibited. It, also, you can walk in from Massachusetts, uh, when, we had four acres that were in Massachusetts that we gave to the, sorry, that my mother and father gave to mass wildlife that now is part of a corridor that runs from Wetaque, uh, along the Mass-New Hampshire border. And so that's all public access land that evuts the conservation end as well.
And, in the same way, that all of my fabulous neighbors have been invited to enjoy it, I'm happy to enjoy, invite anyone who wants to come to do that, to stick to the trails and enjoy it. That's not the problem.
I believe it.
Okay.
Yep.
Yes, ma'am.
Pat, Pat Little again, um, I just wanted to add that, um, I don't, we only found out about this just really recent. I'm sure that there's a lot of our neighbors that are not even aware of this meeting and, and whatnot, that use it. And it's Jalen Drive, I mean, people are always, um, going down, um, you know, and, and using that, um, and all the, all the trails that, uh, probably, you know, most of Pagehill, Jalen, everyone really loves it. I don't know if anybody's been up to, um, Maine and Arcadia, but Kevin and I always call it our, our little Arcadia. We, we just walk out our door and here we are in, you know, Arcadia National Park, it's beautiful.
It is the, I told my kids, if any of you become millionaires, um, you can buy this from me for a retail.
Well, that's, that's-
The best property I've seen in this town.
This is what she has been generous to let anybody use, beautiful streams, little waterfall.
Lou, did you care to speak on this this evening?
Oh, you don't want me to speak on this?
No.
I would take a very pragmatic view. And that is, that the legal cost to defend this for the town would be much higher than what it would cost to, um, to take care of the, of, of plow the road on an annual basis. And that's agreeing with what you had said earlier.
So of course-
Now, the object here is that we're not making a decision today. I believe you were thinking about making this into a warrant article?
No, that's the object of this meeting, is to determine, after the meeting, we will meet. And it'll be a public meeting, but it'll just be us discussing it.
Okay. And so, um, oh, so it's not going to vote in March?
No.
We don't know, maybe-
Okay, so, we're just going to do it as a-
I do wanna understand process, yeah.
As a public meeting, right?
Yeah. So this was, was in order to take in, uh, your comments and comments, um, from others in the public. And we'll certainly continue this, um, to a date in the future that we'll determine tonight, um, so that you guys will, you know, can come in during our deliberation. But for myself, I know that I'd like a little bit of time to digest what I've heard this evening, um, and if anybody else, you know, cares to reach out in the interim, like to take those comments in as well.
Yeah, you can email any one of us or the town administrator, or if you see me walking by the cemetery with my German shepherd, pull up and give me an earful. Just don't come into my house.
Is there a timeframe that I should understand to know what's going on?
And that, we'll discuss that in a moment, um, like one, what the, the next meeting date, uh, will be and what time, um, that we'll revisit this and actually have deliberation between the three of us and decide, uh, whether or not, you know, to put this on the town warrant and possibly, uh, to continue, you know, looking at other roads with this si- similar scenario. Like to continue to address this, so, 'cause I, I don't think it should be a one-off approach, like you're not being singled out. Um, but, you know, there are a more than handful of these scenarios in town.
You said the conservation easement triggered all this.
It brought our, 'cause we're not thinking about Nimi Road every week, we're just not. And then when it comes to us and we see maps, so that's all I, that I meant by that was, now it's like, hey, by the way, looks like there's one residence at the end of a very long road.
He wanted to correct you, too.
But it's one tax card, and that's how we see it, I'm sorry.
We usually don't find things out unless it's, something is brought to our attention and then sometimes it opens a whole can of worms, other times it's just a one-off, like he said, but-
So, yeah, that's what I-
Things don't, you know, we don't go around town looking for, how can we, you know, that type of thing.
I would, I would be upset-
Yeah, how can we make these people miserable?
Right.
That's not what we do.
No.
I would be upset if you had another public meeting at a time when I couldn't be here. And I don't suppose I have any control over that.
Well, since you're here, uh, we could certainly take that cons- into consideration. Um, in my mind, I wasn't looking to make it go any further than a couple of weeks out, um, but-
Well, if we wanted it on the ballot, do you have that calendar?
January fourteenth, it's the last day to accept a warrant article.
A town warrant article, so, there's some time of-
Is there a time of, like, do you?
Well, I know it's gonna be way over Thanksgiving.
Okay.
So, that week, you know, I won't be here.
But why does there even need to be another public hearing?
Uh, I'm, for myself, I'm not prepared to deliberate on this right now, um, with these, you know, my-
I got you.
Yeah, so it gives me time to kinda take everything in and, um, you know, speak with people, you know, further and, um-
And the public hearing is actually required by law.
Before this warrant or before?
Yeah, before you can even consider putting it on the warrant.
So this was not the public meeting?
No, this was.
This is.
This is the public hearing.
Public hearing.
It's one step in what could be a process or may not be, that's the point of the public hearing. And I believe what you're referring to most likely is the day that it's on our agenda to vote, which way are we going?
Correct, and it's only fair to let everyone in the room right now know what that date and time is, 'cause you, you know, took your time to come this evening. So it's a date certain, so it's, that doesn't happen at two o'clock in the afternoon on a Wednesday, which isn't even a regular meeting night. You know, it's just not our intent, it's full transparency and letting everyone know when we're gonna be, uh, coming back to discuss this again, um.
Uh, I think if you decided that you have to put it on the ballot, I would like to have a lawyer come to that meeting. You know, if you-
And that's, that's up to you.
If you decide you don't need to, I wouldn't wanna be doing that, you know?
But what, us putting it on the ballot, I'm not sure, um,
I just think I'm gonna do-
An attorney, that an attorney can, will make a difference, I mean, if you wanted him to witness, but it's not a legal case.
Yeah, they couldn't, an attorney wouldn't be able to prevent the selectmen from putting that one on.
It would be a legal case after it's turned into a class six road, and then like Lou said-
It potentially could be.
Right.
I don't see that that's the absolute outcome. I think that there can be a discussion between two people without involving the superior court, perhaps I'm naive.
Oh, I see, I understand what you're saying.
Well, there's that, and then also just because it goes on the warrant, doesn't mean that the rest of the community is gonna vote to discontinue, or, uh, not discontinue, but to-
Right.
Um, to get a class six road, yeah.
It'd be the whole town voting on it, so it would have to pass.
More than fifty percent of this town doesn't even know Nimi Road exists.
Right.
And they're gonna say, oh, this will lower our tax dollars, get rid of the road.
No.
That may be your perspective, but there may be a lot more people that find value in it, not fifty percent, yeah.
Anyway, I just feel that I'm not equipped to discuss, except at the emotional level I have, anything about the consequences. And you know, when you look at whatever you said, cost of value, kinds of things, I have not, so I would need my attorney, he's going back to California, so-
And we would never try to advise you not to bring an attorney. If you feel you need one, however, we don't feel responsible for you hiring an attorney.
You're not responsible, but I just feel if you decide this is worth, you're going ahead and putting on the ballot, that I would want you to, a sense for, you know, what we should do about it. I don't have a sense for that beyond telling you the letter.
I can understand that, yeah.
I have a question, just so I'm clear about the process.
Yeah.
So at this point, we're gonna take a breather, this, and, and we're gonna deliberate and more public comment by email or whatever, or conversation will be welcome.
Not gonna close public comment, like in this whole time.
Correct, and then at some point in the future, at the, at a, at a, to be determined selectance meeting, you will actually take a vote on whether or not to put it on the ballot, correct?
Correct.
And then it'll go through the deliberative session, I assume, as well?
Yes.
And as deliberative session, the wording or whatever can be changed if needed be by public vote, correct?
Yep.
And that deliberative session is sometime February?
Yep.
We're just-
February.
We just set those dates, I think it's February fourth or eleven.
I can look at my notes, are you deliberative February, February fourth?
Right, and then- February fourth, and then after the deliberative session and the change in whatever language to a warrant article, at that point, it would then be voted in in March as yay or nay.
Correct. Correct.
So that is the basic process, right?
Yes.
Yeah, there, there is no suddenly throwing something, it is many steps to this process.
Correct, I just wanted to make sure that I understood the process.
That was well explained.
Even that deliberative, it's a, it's more people from the community that'll come to that, and then the votes of the people in the room is what could alter the different things.
Right.
Before it goes on to the warrant.
And you can't, and at the deliberative, you can't remove a warrant article, but you could change the verbiage to say, if, in, in this case, to keep Nimi Road as a class five road, instead of changing it to a, reclassifying to a class six, would be the way-
Correct. There are several plus steps.
Yeah, and the whole thing gets kinda fun, because at, at that point, what did you accomplish?
Yeah, I know.
We don't need to get on that note, yeah.
Right.
Except for confusing somebody.
Yep.
God, I sense that.
That's what I said, that.
Have to.
Yeah. That's what else.
So, pick a date, any date.
Except for the week of Thanksgiving.
Correct. Which, oh, it's my brother's birthday this year.
I'm thinking the twelfth of November.
Birthday.
Is that your birthday?
Yeah, the week we're getting.
Cause the twenty-ninth jam-packed, and then the fifth is election, yeah.
I guess there's a few weeks to-
Give us some monkey to get other feedback from people we meet on the street.
Yeah.
So the twelfth?
Make a motion to continue this public hearing on, uh, the-
Would it be a continuance or?
Yeah, it's a continuance, we'll leave it open, um, to November twelfth at seven P M. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, any discussion? I'll take your point from the audience, ma'am.
Oh, I just-
Did you have anything to say on the date specifically?
No, no.
Okay.
You'll wait on that?
Yeah, so you all have a chance to speak again, um, on the twelfth. Um, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
But you could decide now not to do that, is that right?
But, but John was saying that you like trying to think-
Yes, we could.
Yeah, we could-
Yep.
Call the vote and force a vote this evening, but not at this point, we just continue.
But you don't want to, I understand, but you could do it before the twelfth, or you couldn't?
No, no, we will not discuss this as a board until the evening of the twelfth.
No.
That was motion.
So they're gonna each go to their-
Well, we'll discuss it today still.
Digest all of, everything that was said tonight, and then on the twelfth.
Sure. After this, public comment is off or?
No, public comment's open, not, we're, all discussion's over at this point, 'cause we just continued it to, uh, the twelfth. And then we'll take in more public comment, close public comment, and then, uh, deliberate.
But just not in a meeting?
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying?
What's that?
Well, you said we won't discuss it until November twelfth, if someone comes next week and says, I just wanted to talk about-
Well, yeah, if somebody comes into a meeting, we can take their comments in, but, I'm just saying, as, we're not gonna make a decision, the three of us, ahead of, ahead of the twelfth.
To make a decision. All right, that's what I was gonna say.
There's gonna be no backdoor discussions between the three of us and coming up with a plan or anything like that, like this, it shuts this portion. And then, um, we'll be discussing the rest of it in front of you all unless there's one-offs and, you know-
Well, so like if, if Lou has a thought next week, you won't allow it to be?
It's, it could be on public record, but we're not gonna get into deliberation to make a decision next week.
Not to make a decision, but I'd like to keep it so that us three in a public meeting are able to, if we have a thought.
No decisions will be made.
No decisions to be made, but just to pass on the thought, I would, I wouldn't wanna restrict us to, um, not talking to each other about it until the actual day and then, I mean, I guess we can do that, we do that with a lot of things.
Yeah, yeah.
But in this case, I don't know.
And if anyone else, if you know of anyone that didn't, wasn't able to come tonight and they wanna send a comment, they can, you have my email address, you can send it to me or any of the selectmen.
I see.
You know, they, they can make comments, so when we open the public hearing again on the twelfth, we can take in any emails that we got, or if people, other people wanna show up on the twelfth, they, he said he was gonna open public comment first, so we'll hear anybody, any new comments that need to be s- heard as part of the minutes or whatever, and then they will make a decision that night though.
And there were a few email, mails that had been sent ahead of this meeting, those will go into, uh, the record this evening, um, so it'll be a part of the minutes for this evening.
So you don't share those with us tonight?
They'll become public now.
No, yeah, we'll come back to it, and it'll be a part of the minute, so you'll be able to read over everything in between now and then, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So for, so for the meeting on the twelfth, would it be helpful to, like, the, all the people that are, that don't know even about this class change, to, um, actually be here, like, all the neighbors that walk in and whatnot, would that be helpful?
They could, uh, walk in or write in?
Yeah, if, if they want to come in, they can, if they wanna send any of three, four of us an email, they can do that as well. So they didn't, you know, in case they couldn't make it that night or, you know.
Yeah, it's public.
Yeah, it's a public hearing, so, whenever, yeah.
And if by chance something comes up in a meeting, that section of the minutes will be a part of the public hearing on the twelfth. All right, so that'll be-
And I, and I will email you the minutes.
You'll let me know, okay.
So you'll have everything.
I, I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, like, this is not meant to be adversarial, it's just to have a discussion that no one's had for a long time, so.
Got it, obviously.
And I, I, the last thing that, um, we like, or, like, it's always have those little chirpings, like, the murmurs in the background. When we have the opportunity to bring them forward, let's have a discussion as a community, so, really appreciate you all coming in this evening.
I think it was quite wonderful. I think it was quite wonderful of all my neighbors and all my friends to come.
Absolutely.
And I can't thank you enough.
Have a good night.
You'll have to make the cake.
I'll make you a burger.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
Good night, Joe.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night.
Oh, thank you so much.
It's almost too short.
Oh, you brought the book.
Oh, yeah.
Spent a lifetime studying that.
Oh, there you go. I hope I'll still be the other that rode with a few wheelers. Thank you all.
Nice to meet you.
Alright, thank you.
Take care.
Have a good night. Nice to meet you.
Have a safe flight home.
Thank you.
Yep.
This was on that sign and key, um, on the top of it.
Alright, I'll just take it.
Before the meeting. Looked fairly well.
Well, that was good.
Yeah.
They made a FedEx driver sign in.
At a meeting tonight?
No, uh, like on that, China, the other, the sheet by the door. There's my emergency grab. I was like, oh, there's a sign and sheet.
Yeah, I forgot to do it, that's why, that's why I got up quick. I was like, oh no, I gotta, so I printed it on.
Cool.
Same thing.
With that. Do you have anything else for old new business?
Nope.
Jason? Lou?
The part about the announcement of the Boston Post Kane recipient? Since it's two lines and the second line starts with a, a capital P. Are we talking about, we're going to announce it tonight and then the presentation that will be held on October twenty second?
Yeah. Yeah, so I announced that earlier in the presentation, it's gonna be on October twenty second at five thirty.
Okay.
Yeah. Good.
Cause I'm really anxious to find out what it, who it's gonna be.
We're gonna have to count a little bit though.
No, but I'm worried if it be my wife.
You, you would've had to nominate.
Babe, Lou, we're still on camera.
Why do you watch this?
We are still on camera.
Uh-oh. Crap.
Yeah.
He'll have to, he'll have to go pitch a tent on, uh, Nimi Road.
Um.
We'll be allowed home.
With the trunk or treat, should I have people email you or Jenny or?
Oh, yeah. Um.
She involved or?
I don't, I don't really know who all is involved. I just know that, you know, for safety sake, they decided it would be safer, instead of going to the fire station and S V A S, it would be safer to, uh, do it down at.
Yeah, so we definitely have fire.
Field, fire.
S V A S.
Those two definitely.
And then the planning board is looking to, like, has tasked somebody with going.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cool.
Um, so I don't know. Yeah, I don't know if there's any other departments or. Yeah.
Oh, that's the day of the, um.
An H M A.
An H M A conference. Are you going for that?
I was weighing it out, but I was.
Today, tomorrow's the last day to register.
Yeah, I know, it's been an active dialogue, yeah.
I am, yeah. Um, I signed D up today too.
Yeah.
Yeah, so probably wouldn't get back from there till like five, five thirty.
Yeah. Alright.
So.
So maybe if you get to figure that out tomorrow, like who could take up.
Well, yeah, we have the staff meeting, so.
Yeah, cause it, um, one thing that was introduced as a thought, um, when I spoke on this, um, a couple of weeks ago at the planning board meeting, was a suggestion was made to have it down by Jaclyn Drive and like down that end, cause it's so busy already, like to maybe set up somewhere, like. I don't know, yeah, but it's already so busy, so.
Yeah.
I don't think it'd be a bad thing to have another spot at the town fields and a lot of them people be driving by anyways, so.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm sorry, what, what are you talking about?
Uh, like a trunk or treat?
Oh, okay, that, that's what I thought, that was a shirt.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you just get back to me with who, I can let people know, cause I know, um, some, a couple of businesses were interested.
Yeah, so I mean, if they wanna, just shoot me an email and then I can maybe get with mid, I mean, like I said, staff meeting, so
Yeah.
tomorrow at ten, so I can, you know.
Okay.
Two logistics, they had some, said something about lower field, upper field, I don't know, so.
Yeah, so it'll probably be a, be a good idea to put the details out and how many slots would be available for, um,
and parking and. Yeah. Yeah.
Like how many open slots we could offer, I guess, might be a good way to approach it.
Right. Okay. Then I don't know if it was necessarily a trunk or treat or if they were gonna set up tables. You know what I mean?
I spoke with Wendy, I believe she used the term trunk or treat.
Like to me, just trunk or treat. Oh, really?
Think so, but it could be an open trunk and a table in front of it and candy and.
Not trunk or treat. Well, I'm just thinking if we had tables, it would be, you could accommodate a lot more people.
Well.
Cause you're not having a parking tower on it.
Offer tomorrow, if you guys can determine what it's gonna be, um, yeah, cause there is some interest.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, alright. Tell them to shoot me an email.
What's that?
Tell them to shoot me an email.
Alright.
Have you set the time for, uh, the time allotment for, for, you know, trunk or treat or?
We did, um.
Five to seven?
There you go.
Okay.
Yeah, and, um, uh, October thirty first, right, was that about a month ago or?
Um, well, tonight we said the time, but yeah, we did. No, we never actually officially discussed it this yet.
Yeah, but. I thought we did. Well.
No.
You might be right. I wrote it down.
I don't remember. I mean, we always do it on.
Cause that is a quick, it's just a quick, yeah.
I don't remember, I don't remember putting it in the minutes. I remember.
My notes are not definitive.
I did mention it, that Wendy had sent me an email and would you guys object to doing it at the town, at the town field?
Yeah.
But at that point, we hadn't said anything about the time or a date or anything, but it's always on Halloween, so.
Yeah, but it's something that we set annually.
Yeah.
And I don't know why I thought we had already done it. Yeah. Alright, October thirty first from five to seven.
Town field.
Trick or treating. Well, not at town field, all around town.
It may be trick or treating, all around town, yeah.
Yeah.
So it may be trick or treating, it may be trunk or treating, we don't know.
Yeah.
We'll be done by then.
Alright. Yeah. Yeah, that's why we, uh, go to seven, so it can get dark and, yeah, get some of that spooky feeling that people like. Glad my kids are grown. So, Jason?
I was just looking at this, are we, do we know of any, um, warrant articles that we'd like to submit or have we had any thoughts? For the twenty five ballot? And I think I shared one thought, I'm not sure. Maybe I didn't, and that was to consider putting in a warrant article for a dump truck. And I was in, uh, looking into these class six road things, I was in the office on the holiday and digging through the files. But I did stumble across, I can't remember what year it was, twenty, whatever year, there was a warrant article for a dump truck.
Yeah.
It failed.
Was that capital reserve?
No, just a authorized to expend. I mean, just flat out to purchase a dump truck, which, yeah, I think I brought it up at the other meeting, that it seems like that capital reserve fund, something happened where it's not filling the need.
Did it, um, so did it get voted in?
That, that particular warrant article, no, it failed.
Where'd you find that?
It was in the infrastructure file.
Oh, infrastructure, that's weird.
Yeah, because it was, is it, someone took a picture of this book?
Oh, the page.
Yeah, and so it was one of the ones on the page.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be a good discussion to have, um, and then also look at from the pers- perspective of the municipal lease purchase, um, agreements.
Hmm.
Cause those tend to facilitate rotation well.
So that you don't have to predict what, as much.
Yeah, and then you start right out with that lower cost annually, it's a part of our budget, not necessarily a part of our capital improvements plan, like a savings plan, um. And then you can just keep renewing to another lease purchase when you need a new vehicle, you know, just sort of keeps rolling, um, through and helps rotations, yeah.
Keep payment always.
And the payment continues to go up.
Pay a little bit more. Well, everything does, yeah, yeah, all the cost of vehicle goes up, every vehicle too, so.
Feature agreement, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, but this, it's a way to kind of fight those hundreds of thousands and if not millions numbers, um, that. Hey, can you believe it? What, seven, eight years ago, maybe nine years ago, we were talking about two point three million for a safety complex and now a fire engine is over a million dollars.
Yeah. Yeah.
You know, a vehicle, yeah, yeah.
Crazy.
So.
First time we were talking about the, um, the police station, it was just like one point two million.
Yeah, that's probably before I, uh, moved into town, yeah, but I know it's just, that's insane where things have gone, so.
Yeah.
Um, that would be an avenue that I'd like to look at, the existing, uh, lease purchase of the loader. How that's working out, yeah, like is it, when that term's gonna be up, what we, if we can forecast what the next contract may look like? And if it's meeting the wear and tear of the machine right now, like is, cause I don't think we've been faced with any major repairs on that. You know, and does it look like over the next few years?
Just say that out loud.
Well, it's a.
Alright.
Just knock on wood.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we've only had it for a year.
It's like, no. Few years.
Three years?
Yeah, I think so, three, yeah.
So Jason, you're gonna talk to Peter about that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just, yeah, from what I've heard, there's good and bad. The bad is you pay a little bit of interest.
Right.
Yeah, but, yeah. The good is, it's a lease. Alright. I didn't have anything else.
I do, oh, vote on November fifth. Seven to seven this year.
And what do we have on for next week?
So many things. Um.
That'd be a test.
Do you want me to tell you what they are? Or do you wanna be surprised?
Just one.
Just one?
Yeah.
I wanna know the other.
The most, the most important one.
Pledge your allegiance.
Alright. Uh, so.
The Boston Coast Post.
Oh, that's actually, yeah, we, next week's gonna be a cool, like a nice, good feeling kind of meeting week, yeah.
Yeah, so. Yeah. And then, uh, so there's, um, the Mount Minatok baseball, um, they wanna talk about putting batting cages at the town field. Then we have the Boston Post Kane presentation, then we have, um, uh, appreciation to, um, Chief Hatcher and Officer Reyes for their life-saving efforts on September twenty eighth.
Hmm.
And that is all.
Do we have anything from the baseball people yet?
Um, so I didn't even get the original email, Mindy just happened to mention it. She was like, hey, did you schedule them? I'm like, I don't even know what you're talking about.
Um, like any type of paperwork or?
So she forwarded me the email and he sent it not to my email address, it was like a combination of the old one and the, the dot gov and the dot org, so he didn't send it to me.
I have to get with Bert too, cause he did the same thing when I was asking him about some stuff. You know, like.
So I, um.
Yeah, it wasn't the right.
So Mindy forwarded it to me, so I emailed Wade and said, hey, I didn't get this. Just wanna let you know, you know, can you come in the twenty second?
Cause any type of things that they can give us that you could put in Dropbox ahead of time, you know, may help them.
Yeah.
Email it, please.
Or email, yeah, not Dropbox, email.
He hates Dropbox.
Uh, one way or the other, yeah, Dropbox is a mess.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
I think he had a drawing with it, I was, I'll, I'll send it to you though.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, no problem. I try to email everything. Sometimes it's too much, but most times.
And then if we adjourn early enough, can you help me set up the app for our new accounting software, so I can have a thing that I go like that and I'm poof, there I am and I can say, oh, the board of selectmen are overspending.
I am not technic- technologically, uh.
I have to go to our I T guy.
I think that that, uh, the link that was sent.
I don't know. You just save it, can you save it?
I'm gonna.
As a, I mean, I know I can save the path as a bookmark, so when you open Google or.
Don't go start talking about paths, Nicole went on and on for about thirty minutes, like showing me on the computer a path, cause I, I was accusing her of filing things wrong on the computer, and I was like, no, this is what this means.
Are you talking about a hot link?
Huh?
Are you talking about a hot link?
I don't know what a hot link is.
That's where you point at one line or, or just something that has a little bit of a change and it automatically takes you to.
Do we want to adjourn?
I don't know, a specific R say that has to do with that.
Oh, no, no, he's talking about trying to access B S and A.
Yeah, last call, Lou, nothing?
Huh? Nothing.
Alright, Ron, thank you very much. Thank you to everybody who came in this evening. Have a good night.